Good evening and welcome to the Security, Safety and Transportation Subcommittee Meeting. We are at the George Rahm Little Theater at Brockton High School. And today is Tuesday, April 4th, 2023, and the time is 5:51 PM. If we can just start off with a roll call. Mrs. Ayers?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
And the Chair, Joyce Asak, is present. So, on the agenda for item number one is presentation and discussion of Inforce 911: Real-Time Threat Alert and Notification Software. And I believe we have someone by Zoom? Okay.
Brandon Flanagan.
Brandon Flanagan? Okay. And is he going to be giving us a presentation? Okay, so I'm going to step away.
Good afternoon, this is Brandon Flanagan. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Wonderful. In just a moment here, I'm sharing my screen. It looks like there's a slight delay from my computer to yours. There we go, looks like we have my mapping interface up. So, is this okay to get started at this time?
Sure.
Great. Well, first of all, thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Brandon Flanagan. I'm the President and CEO of Inforce Technology. We're a Massachusetts-based software organization. We, of course, have developed the Inforce 911 School Safety Service, with which I plan to provide a brief demonstration to this committee this evening. As an organization, we have a nationwide presence which spans the country from coast to coast. Of course, being a Massachusetts-based organization, we have a very strong presence throughout the Commonwealth. Most notably, we've undertaken deployments in the cities of Worcester, Quincy, and many others throughout. And my goal is to take you through, as I mentioned, a demonstration of the software, to show you precisely how this works. If there are any questions during the demonstration, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll be glad to address them upon the conclusion of the demonstration. Inforce 911, in its simplest form, is a mobile panic button. It's an application in which we provide teachers, faculty, and staff the ability to launch an alert upon the recognition of a threat within a school building, sending that alert directly to the police department in quite literally seconds. Inforce 911, its main objective is to primarily reduce police response time to any type of threat which the schools may be facing. Why that is is because we know that statistically speaking, the sooner law enforcement arrive on scene to a threat, the sooner the situation ends, and thus, we save lives in the meantime. Secondly, the application aims to bridge the communications gap, which we know inherently exists between a school building under threat with local law enforcement. Perhaps it's one of the greatest challenges that schools and school districts alike are faced with throughout the country. How we're able to accomplish these tasks is by enabling teachers, faculty, and staff to have access to the application on any device inside the classroom. So that includes computers, laptops, desktops, tablets, and smartphones. That also means that teachers and staff can leverage any mode of connectivity in order to first initiate that alert. So modes of connectivity in this case include hardwired Ethernet connectivity, Wi-Fi connectivity, and cell service. The application is designed in such a manner that it will utilize whatever mode of connectivity has available to it, and of course, redundantly rolling to the next based on availability. What you're looking at on the screen here, folks, is what we refer to as the patrol interface. This is the application in which Brockton PD would have access to. More specifically, this piece of the application is deployed in three places. Number one is the in-car computers or the MDTs that exist right inside the police cruisers. Number two, internally to the police department itself residing on the dispatch consoles. And then, thirdly, officers and command staff have the means to receive an alert to their mobile devices regardless of duty status and regardless of where they may be. So that means that either an on- or off-duty officer can still receive the alert, and the chief has an example who may be elsewhere in New England, which still have the ability to receive an alert to her device in real time. The application is CEGIS compliant. The data that's associated with this and transmitted through the service is encrypted up to FIPS 142 standard. That meets and exceeds the FBI standards for encrypting this data. And then, holistically, it's entirely hosted in Microsoft Government Azure. So it's a highly, highly secure environment, highly redundant, and of course, very secure. As you'll note on the top right-hand corner, each officer or dispatcher having access to the application is identified by the agency, name, rank, and identification number. Otherwise, in essence, this is how law enforcement will receive an alert. The initiating software, which hopefully you can see on the lower right-hand corner, just down below here, which my mouse is hovering over, is the initiating application. This is the initiating software that teachers, faculty, and staff will have access to on any of those devices that I mentioned a few moments ago. As you'll see here in just a moment, this is a two-step process. I should say a two-click process. Upon recognition of a potentially life-threatening event in my school, I first have to click on that application, as I do now. Now, upon doing so, you'll see that I have a few options here. Talking about them sequentially, you'll see that each individual user has up to 10 pre-programmed locations that are specific to them. So my locations would be specific to me, and so on, so forth down the line. These locations represent where I teach throughout the majority of the day, or other locations where I may visit. In this case, Room 100 is checkmarked. That defaults to my default setting, or my default location preference, because perhaps that's where I teach throughout the majority of my day. Otherwise, I could select the gym, or the cafeteria, or even the main office, as an example. If I were to send an alert from my mobile device that had the luxury of those same 10 pre-programmed locations, an 11th option, which is the means to launch an alert from my GPS location, so as a gym teacher who may be outside the ballfields during the course of a day, or perhaps a teacher who teaches in multiple different buildings throughout the course of his or her day, would also enjoy that luxury. Otherwise, down here, under the categories, I could determine what type of alert it is that I wish to send. And all staff is an internal notification, in which case, an immediate law enforcement response is not required. Perhaps this is a message that the administration would like to push throughout the building, notifying other staff of early closure, as an example. Otherwise, you have active shooter, intruder, medical emergency, and other, which is TBD based on your district's preference. Otherwise, the checkmark denotes my default to active shooter in this case. And without having to do anything further, my second click is going to be on send emergency alert. Now, when I do this, I present you the 10-second countdown window. If I do nothing further, this will count down to zero, and send that alert outward. Or, I could click cancel, or send alert to bypass that countdown, sending the alert up faster. The audible and visual notification that you've seen and heard to the forefront of your screen here is what law enforcement is receiving within that 10-second period. It automatically tells them that, in this case, the Fenway High School has launched an alert. It's experiencing an active shooter situation. It's physically located at 71 Newbury Street, Peabody, Massachusetts. And yet, more specifically, teacher Brandon Flanagan in Classroom 100 is who and where that threat originated from. Very, very specific information that we've accomplished and put into the hands of our first responders at the local level in quite literally seconds. Live field testing that we've conducted demonstrates that we send this out in as quick as four seconds. Now, the national average nationwide, from the time it takes to place a 911 cellphone call, to have that answered by your PSAP routed to the local agency, and then dispatched for a call for service, can take anywhere from two to four minutes, on average. Meanwhile, the average active shooter event is approximately five minutes. The problem that we've experienced throughout the country is that all too often, law enforcement officers are responding on scene after the fact. Our goal is to reduce response time by putting this type of actionable and critical information into the hands of our first responders, again, in seconds. As an officer having received the alert, I can click on the green tab here. I populated it to the chatroom. And speaking on two additional topics here, just briefly, we provide two additional repositories of information. The first is the emergency details tab here, in which case, information specific to the building that's experiencing this threat would contain that type of information, such as, an example, the name of the administrator, his or her emergency contact information, any other nuance that a first responder would like to know about upon making entry to that building, which may also include the fact that there's a single point of entry to that school building, but on the alpha side of that building, the main entrance is always locked. However, there's a key FOB location, and the access code is EBCD. So, specific information to the building that first responders would like to know about, and perhaps should know about, would be posted here. In addition, we also will work with the district to incorporate its floor plans, emergency operations plans, and other type of data. So, as an example, your district can provide your floor plans that include actual building schematics, blueprints, perhaps aerial photographic views, and other emergency response plans, including, as an example, reunification points, student pickup points, and staging areas and locations. All that data can be integrated and streamlined into the Inforce 911 platform so that it becomes available in the palm of the hand of our first responders, and of course, as part of this initial notification process. Moving along down the line here, the window that I've just called up is the window in which the individual, in this case, the teacher, who initiated the alert is going to receive. First and foremost, upon receipt of this, they have the assurances that law enforcement has received their alert. Further evidence and proof of that exists right here in these windows, because we enable those folks to recognize who the officers and dispatchers are that are responding to the event. And the reason we do that, very simply, is for peace of mind, because at the end of the day, we want them to know that help is coming. Now, from this perspective, we're able to really take care of this communication piece that has been such a problem for so long, because we're enabling the individual who launched the alert at the point of incident to communicate directly with their local first responders. So in this case, they could type a message which reads "shooter, red shirt," just as an example. Instantaneously, law enforcement receives that description, and from who and where it was sent. In response, the PD could say something in reply. As an example, ETA is 30 seconds. And once more, we've effectuated this real-time, two-way communication between the individuals at the school and the individuals responding to the police department. Now, simultaneously and systemically throughout this particular building, every other individual is becoming aware and is being made aware of this threat, and specifically, the nature of the threat and where that threat is located. So in essence, every other individual is automatically notified, filtered into this existing chat platform, so they recognize what and where the threat is. And based on that information, we want to help those individuals to take action accordingly, and certainly decisively, depending on what that situation dictates. If I'm two doors down, as an example, from Classroom 100, my best option may be to barricade my doorway. Desks, chairs, everything else go against the door. Conversely, however, if I'm at the opposite end of the building, and I have the ability to evacuate out the nearest exit with my 20 students, I may choose to do that. The reason why I have the ability to make that determination is because, for the first time, I'm made aware of what the situation is. All too often, and as an example, as we saw, as tragic as it was in Uvalde, Texas, it took 47 minutes for the school to make that lockdown announcement. This automates that process for the school so that everybody is automatically notified about the threat and where the threat is, so that we can help them take action, taking the guesswork out of it. It's enough that we ask teachers to have to respond to these circumstances, but we want to be able to arm them with powerful information to help them in making good decisions. Certainly, having this information here accessible and automated out to the population of that campus is incredibly important, but not the least of which here is that because you have multiple points of contact in this chatroom, that also means that we can receive updated information from more than just one individual. So if there's somebody in Classroom 120, just as an example, who sees the individual meeting that description, running towards the cafeteria, I could type that information into the chatroom. And certainly, for the benefit of law enforcement, now they recognize where the threat is compared to where it was moments ago, but furthermore, it's the benefit of my colleagues who may be in that assailant's path. The point here is that, for the first time, we can collect and ascertain real-time, updated information from the point of incident, from multiple points of contact, into putting it into the hands of our first responders in a real-time setting. Otherwise, we don't have the means to do this today. So, having this, of course, is incredibly valuable during the threat, but after the threat, we also recognize that this is an administrator's worst nightmare. So once the threat is over with, how do we identify where everybody is and where everybody went to? Furthermore, how can we identify where students are who may be wounded or need medical attention? And beyond that, how do we begin this reunification process with student and parent? So as an example, because you have this two-way chat available to you, we will work with the PD and the school district, of course, on training and how to use this, but one of the key elements of utilizing this chat piece is to provide that all-clear message. So once the situation is over with and it's cleared, law enforcement can push a message back into the building. And in this case, it may say "all clear," yet we're asking for Classrooms 1 through 10 to please check in. By doing this, we're pushing a message back into the school, so that we hopefully see that Classroom 1 replies back and says, "Hey, we've got all of our 20 kids, we're accounted for." Maybe Classroom 2 says, "Well, I've got 16 kids, and we evacuated, we're hiding behind the 7-Eleven." Well, that's okay. Stay where you are, thank you for letting us know that, and we'll come get you. And it's perhaps Classroom 3 who says, "I've got two students who are critically injured, and they need medical attention now." So instead of waiting to get to those students eventually, we can help get them the medical aid and attention they need now, instead of waiting. And of course, in turn, this is where we continue to mitigate loss of life on the back end of these circumstances. So, regaining this accountability measure, identifying where everybody is and where everybody went to, is an incredibly important tool that will serve a tremendous benefit to the district. Otherwise, when the situation is entirely over with, law enforcement can end the alert, they confirm, yes, all this chat data is stored and hosted for the district on its behalf. If at any point in time the district needs to utilize this data, or to review this data, that's something that certainly we can help them out with. Furthermore, this system also provides you a test mode, so you can put this system into test mode. So if you'd like to run lockdown drills, or safety drills in collaboration with your PD, you can certainly do that. All of your alerts will be prefaced with the word "test." And at the end of the day, if you'd like to review a chat transcript or review the data file, we can provide that to you, again, upon request, so you can leverage that as an after-action review, or as a debriefing tool. But nevertheless, something that is available to you. Finally, the last feature that brings us full circle as an all-hazards approach to school safety is what we refer to as the reversal. A little bit different here in that this is going to be initiated from the police department. So if the PD is made aware of a threat pertaining to one of the schools in the district, or perhaps every school in the district, they could initiate this reversal alert. They could then determine which schools they wish to select, or perhaps, in this case, we could just draw a geofence around all of the schools in the city and communicate with them effectively. In the subject line here, we could broadcast the message that reads, excuse me, "Lock in." And in the message, we could say something like "known threat in the area." Now, as I hit send, and you'll hear the reverse alert come to the foreground of that computer device, or the application running on your smartphone, as an example. The caveat to that, however, is that not every staff member will be set up to receive the reverse alert. And the reason why that is, of course, we want to limit chaos. We want to really narrow that if we can. So as a general rule of thumb, we suggest that you identify a user group of folks big enough who are set up to receive the reverse alerts and to take action, i.e., front office staff, key administration, et cetera, but not too small of a group that they may miss the alert. So with that being said, subject line is to lock in, the message here is "known threat in the area," and we click send. And in just a few short seconds, you're going to hear the reverse alert notification come to the foreground of my computer screen.
New Inforce 911 Reverse Alert.
So as the principal, or as the key administrator to that building, I would receive that message from Brockton PD. I could click on "join first alert chatroom." You'll see that I'm filtered this time into the chatroom, and I could type a message as simple as "okay." And when I do that, law enforcement recognizes that, yes, you filtered yourself into the chatroom, you've received it, and you've confirmed the message because you've communicated directly back with me. In real life, there have been multiple scenarios and situations in which this has been used with our install base throughout the country. To name a few, we've seen domestic custodial disputes between parents, in which case, juvenile officer in the courtroom recognizes that a parent's made a threat to pick up a student after losing custody. In that case, the juvenile officer went ahead and just sent a reverse alert rate to the schools to notify them of that potential threat. We've seen also a bank robbery pursuit in progress, in which case, the dispatcher looked at the map and recognized that that pursuit looks like it's heading towards one of the elementary schools. So she went ahead and provided that reverse notification. The schools went into a quiet lockdown or safe campus mode, pulled all the kids in from recess, and as Murphy's Law would have it, the pursuit ended in the parking lot of that elementary school. But, most importantly, crisis was avoided because they were able to bring everybody inside due to good communication. We've also seen severe weather alerts in which a large county down in the mid-Atlantic region needed to get a message out to 40-something schools simultaneously. This enabled them to do that in one fell swoop. And lastly, folks, we've seen this continuous barrage of hoax calls, and I guess they're calling up SWAT-ing events throughout the country. It happened very recently in as close to us as New Hampshire. We had a deployed site there, in which case, the PD received a call from an individual who said there's an active shooter inside the school. The police department reversed notified the school, made contact with the administration, very quickly recognized and identified this was a hoax. But it was only due to very good communication in a real-time element that they were able to begin the de-escalation process nearly instantaneously, and avoided what could have been a very, very scary, potentially catastrophic situation. But nevertheless, the reverse alert is a substantial means to communicate in a real-time setting with key individuals of a potential threat that, in this case, the schools may be otherwise unaware of. Just as before, when I'm all complete, I can end the reverse alert, confirm yes, X out of it, everybody's notified to the fact that the alert's been closed, and that's it. So with that being said, folks, that is your overview of the Inforce 911 School Safety app, and I'm certainly glad to take any questions that you may have this time.
Give me one second. Before we start with the questions, if the record can just reflect, Mrs. Cynthia Mendez is with us in the meeting. She joined us as soon as the presentation started. So I actually have a couple of questions. I like the reverse 911, and my only question is, is there a live support if we run into a glitch? Is there some kind of a live support that they can reach out to?
That's a great question, and I'll speak on that and expand on that for just a moment. So as part of the service offering that we provide you, we will work with the district hand-in-hand to onboard, deploy, and train your staff on how to properly utilize the service. We, of course, want to create long-term and sustainable success for you while instilling the confidence that if and when, God forbid, this needs to be utilized, you'll be able to do so without question. In addition, we provide 24-by-7 IT and tech support. So if at any point in time you need to speak to somebody, you'll be speaking with somebody either from our Massachusetts or our New Hampshire offices, right here, obviously in New England and in Massachusetts. And that's, of course, again, around the clock as needed.
My other question was, is they can message internally. So you mentioned that they can do a stay-in-place, but say a teacher's having an issue in their classroom, they can message that there's an issue in the classroom while they're taking care of the issue, they've already notified those within the school, rather than, you know, send somebody down to the principal's office or call for help. This is their way of doing this? Can they go... I saw that early on in the video. Am I correct in that, that they can communicate back and forth internally?
Yes, that is correct, yes. There is an internal notification process, in which case, an individual who may need to, again, push a message outbound, or perhaps send a specific message to the administration, the crisis management team, or even the SRO in the building, they have the ability to do that, this all-staff, aka the internal alert. And this does not require or warrant a large-scale law enforcement response, because it's designed to be an internal notification or internal messaging process. So in that case, in the example that you used, the answer is yes. That's a great example of when this could be used, and by the way, it's done so silently, right? So that there is, you know, some type of circumstance that we don't need to exacerbate by, as you said, calling for help right in front of everybody, you could do so discreetly by sending this all-staff alert requesting assistance to your classroom.
Okay, because I know we do, we do, a lot of the schools, the teachers, you have the two-way radios. Not everyone has that, so, but if this is on their phone, they can do it discreetly. And my third question before I ask the other members is, what is the cost on this, and is there... What are we looking at for a cost as far as getting this, and do you have to upgrade the program, like, the software?
Great question. So, we, typically, the price is based on a site license, so it's based on the number of schools that you have in the district. Typically, we start at merely $2,400 per school. That includes everything that you need to be fully live with operational readiness and preparedness, including unlimited apps, unlimited deployments, your onboarding, support, and training. Given the size of this district, I have previously worked with folks of the administration to offer what we can call, or what we refer to as a major city discount, and that's something that we've been able to work into the pricing structure to provide the city of Brockton, public schools in this case, a revised and reduced pricing model. It is an annual licensing model. Typically, we work with municipalities on a three-year contract term.
So what would the discounted price be, since we have 20-some-odd schools?
So, if I'm not mistaken, we have discounted...
Do I apologize? Someone's got some paperwork, Tobias? Okay.
Yep. So unless I'm mistaken, and we can certainly confirm here, we have provided roughly a 50% discount off of that standard list price.
Okay, 32 sites, perfect. We'll get this over to the members to take a look at. Oops, sorry. It's based on 32 sites. Okay. So it's a three-year contract? What if we're not happy after the first year? It doesn't meet what we thought we were going to get? Just being realistic. Are we stuck in that three-year contract? We're a municipal... That's why I'm asking. So, I mean, this is something we need... Well, no, it's not that, it's just, yeah, we just want to make sure it works, because I'd like to see it firsthand. We just saw, you know, a PowerPoint of it, but I'd like to see it and use firsthand. Any of the local schools, anyone around us using this? Tobias?
Quincy.
Quincy's using this? How long has Quincy had this?
I'm not sure, but Officer Livingston and I have gone to do a site visit to check it out. But Officer Livingston does know, inform me that he's aware that they are using it, and I don't think it's that long.
Actually, if any of the members would like, maybe we could do a site visit and see this firsthand, if maybe a couple of us are able to attend, just to see it firsthand. I'd like to see this. Again, this'll solve some of the issues that we're running into where, if a teacher has an issue, say a teacher, you know, there's a student, there's something going on, they can send a message right to the principal's office, and they know the urgency of, we need to get somebody into that classroom, rather than stop, go call. Here, they can just do it discreetly. But any other members have any questions, or Mrs. Ayers?
Just a real quick question about, this is a really stupid tech question, but we have so many different style phones, we have so many different devices out there, you know, how do you handle that in terms of if a teacher has an Android or, like, Wi-Fi access? So is there anything technology-wise that could fail for us that we should be thinking about that we're not thinking about right now? Because I love the system, I love the immediacy of it, but I'm just concerned if you have, you know, a teacher that maybe doesn't have an updated phone, and so the, I'm concerned about the... about the app or the device not working.
That's a good question. I was actually thinking the same thing. Brandon? Is he still with us?
He is.
Did we lose him?
He's muted, I think. Is that muted?
You need to unmute him?
Yeah, you're right, that is us.
Hello?
Hello? Oh, we, can we get him back?
I mean, I also want to note, this isn't replacing current communication system, like we still have over 1,000 handheld radios district-wide.
Oh, we can hear you now. Were you able to hear Mrs. Ayers' question?
I'm so sorry, Zoom had kicked me out for some reason. The last question I heard was, what happens if you'd like out?
Okay, so what I was basically wondering, it feels like a dumb question, but it sounds like some of my colleagues are wondering as well. There's so many different devices out there and, you know, Wi-Fi services, and I guess my concern is that the technology itself, no matter how good it is, how are we guaranteed that everyone will have the appropriate devices so that if they are across the street, like hiding behind the Taco Bell for something dramatic and terrible that's happened, that they're going to be able to get into that chatroom and be able to give an update? Is there something more that we should be thinking of, or I'm just concerned about devices out there not working?
Sure, that's a very fair question, and it's a good question. And so we have, as an organization, we have developed native applications for Chromebooks, Windows devices, Mac devices, Android, and iOS. So we quite literally run the table in terms of providing native applications for conceivably every operating system that exists inside of a classroom today. And that also means, you may have missed this early on, but that also means that you can leverage every mode of connectivity, and the application itself, the service, is designed to utilize whatever mode of connectivity it has available to it, redundantly rolling over to the next option. So of course, that includes Wi-Fi connectivity, hardwired Ethernet connectivity, and/or the leverage of cell service.
Okay, that makes me feel better, thank you.
Any other members with questions or comments? So are we, oh, I apologize, Mr. Rodriguez, you have the floor?
Thank you. And this is a great tool, but you know, when I look at, you know, we just approved the EverAlert system with the clock system that we have. We have access control that we've implemented. We have school police department that we implemented. We got the portable metal detectors, handheld detectors, and we're also going to do a site visit to look at cellphone policy. So when it comes to just having a teacher, you know, being the point person, my thing is, are the students going to be able to, be able to, because that's where most of your information is coming from. So if you look at all the instances that's happened, you know, across the country with, you know, school shootings and violence, is that a lot of that information is coming from the students themselves because, number one, as, when you look at the administrators, the teachers, they're running around trying to make sure that these kids are in a safe place and not really going to a device to send, you know, or this, you know, somebody's walking through the hallway or to that. But there's never enough security per se. I would just like to take, you know, like myself, being a law enforcement official, I like to take a deeper dive, I mean, it's a great presentation, into seeing, you know, what other benefit is this on top of what we have? Like I said, there's never enough security being in that line of field. So I just want to take a deeper dive and do some research on this more, you know, how this service will be beneficial to us with everything that we've already have in place. Not saying that we won't do this, I mean, the cost to me is kind of minimal for this type of service, but I just want to take a deeper dive and do a little bit of research on this to see how it can help us out.
Definitely. Mrs. Ayers?
Sorry, just one more question. If this was something that we did decide to do, how long is the implementation time? Like, how long would it take us to actually get something like this up and running?
Sure, and this was a discussion that we had begun to have at least early on, and it requires some data collection on the initial phase, if you will, of the onboarding process, and that's collecting information to create account names, profiles, and distribute that remotely. With a school district the size of Brockton, if we were to get underway, let's say, in the very near future, the next month or so, we would have no issues ensuring that the entirety of the district is up and running and fully operationally prepared to utilize the application for the start of the next school year. That includes training of your staff, I would imagine, throughout the late summer months before the arrival of your students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, oh, Tobias?
Yeah, I just would like to say that when we first were introduced to this program, we met with the school police, Lieutenant Maker and Sergeant Livingston, and then ultimately Chief Perez, and they very strongly endorsed the program. Unfortunately, they could not be here tonight, but they are 100% in on this.
Thank you so much. It's all about safety and looking to see what's out there to keep our students and our staff safe. And thank you for the presentation, Brandon. We appreciate the presentation.
Yep, it was my pleasure, and thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak and meet with you all tonight. If anybody requires additional information, I'm sure Tobias, Tobias, excuse me, can provide my contact information so that you can reach out to me if appropriate to do so. I'm happy to speak with you, and I'm always available.
Great. Sorry, Mr. Rodriguez has one more question.
Brandon, I know you're a minute man, so what year did you graduate?
I'm sorry, what's that?
What year did you graduate, UMass?
Oh, that's funny, who saw that?
I do my research.
That's awesome. So I concluded, I always tell folks, I concluded my senior football season in 2010, in which case I also received my political science degree at the same time.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will add, just for the official record, I was the only political science major on the football team in the last, like, 20 years, so whatever that's worth.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it, thank you, Brandon.
Thanks, everybody, take care, thank you very much.
Oh, sorry, Tobias, one more question?
I just wanted to add one thing, one of the important features about, oh, sorry, one of the important features about this program is it allows us to actually do aerial photos of the school as well as include the doors and floor plans. So in the police cruisers or whoever's looking at the incident can actually zoom in to that area because we can download all that as well as our emergency plans into the program, which is excellent.
Great, thank you so much. I mean, it is a very interesting program. I'd like to see it, if we can do a, you know, site visit to Quincy, see, you know, do a test, see how it works. We can never have too many safety, you know, we got to keep our students safe, especially given what's been going on all over the country. So we definitely, I definitely want to look into this, it's a great idea. The price, you can't put a price on safety. I don't think you can put a price on safety in my books, everyone's different, but we're going to look into that a little further. If we can move on to, I know we have a couple of meetings going on this evening, so if we can go under other business, if this matters all set, anything under other business?
Thank you, bye-bye.
Oh, thank you, Brandon. So I want to bring up under other business, I want to see if we can have, we really need to look at some of the training that we're doing with our staff, especially what they can and can't do. They really need to know, you know, say a student has a backpack, can you go into that backpack, or do you need to wait for the principal to come or have assistance? So just basic training, we just need to do a little training. I'm hearing a lot from some of the BPS employees, so if we can talk to Sergeant Livingston and Lieutenant Maker, maybe we can do that, look into that. If we can add that, Mrs. Cunningham, if we can add that on maybe the next agenda? And then, I know Tobias, we're running short on time, but Tobias, for the month of April and early May, they're doing safety training on our buses, so I'm not sure if some of the members know, but over the years, they've been doing that. So I'm going to attend just to see, we're going to, you know, see what our students are seeing as far as what they're learning for safety and procedures and what they need to do. So I have the calendar, we just need to let him know which days, if anyone's interested in attending, we can just attend, and I guess we ride on the bus and we'll go through the whole process that our students are going through as far as what to do for safety, you know, in case something happens while you're on the bus, what the procedure is. Anyone else would like anything added to the next meeting's agenda? Mr. Rodriguez?
If we could have Dr. Murray come in, I would like to see an organizational chart of the Transportation Department, including staff.
Okay.
You know, as far as, you know, who's the directors and dispatches and so forth, I'd like to get a breakdown of that. I mean, we have a new transportation, but I would like to see where we are.
Definitely. And I know we talked about, this program sounds wonderful, and it might solve some of the issues that we're having, but maybe talk about adding, trying to get more two-way radios? If we can, you know, as a safety transportation and security committee?
We have so many that...
Do we? Okay, so if anyone needs any, okay.
We have probably 200 extra in waiting to be deployed, there's...
Perfect.
No need to buy any more two-way radios.
Okay, that's perfect. So, Mrs. Ayers?
Just an update on the bus depot in the next meeting, if we have any new updates, just to find out where we're at with that, definitely. If we have any updates on the bus depot...
We'd have to go to transportation, I mean, facilities, but that, Allo can tell us during the finance, the next meeting, he can tell you where that is with the city council. I don't know if, I think the resolve was being filed, but I'm not 100% sure when that's going to be heard by the council, but Allo can tell us during the finance part.
Great, so we're running a little over time for the finance meeting, so any members have anything else to add? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Can I get a second? So motion's been made by Mrs. Ayers, properly seconded by Mrs. Mendez, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, have a good evening, everyone.